Welcome everybody to the June, July 25th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer will be given by Alderman Victor Taylor.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Thank you very much. At this time, I was tasked with the prayer for tonight, but I know a young lady that I've been knowing for awhile. Has God been using her for a long, long time. A young lady, and a lot of you all know her. She gets around town from the north, the south, to east, the west, Craven County, Jones County, Pamlico County. She's an elected official, but not elected. She love people. I'm getting a bio right now. She loves people, and people love her. Without any further ado, I want to present and introduce to you all Minister Ethel Bayle Sampson. She happened to be Commissioner Gina Sampson White. Ms. Sampson.
Praise the Lord. What an introduction. Oh gracious God, as we bow before you right now in the precious name of Jesus, can the Father thank you for your loving kindness and tender mercy, but most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross for us, that we may have a right and title to a tree of life. Can the Father come before you, Stephen, and the Father thank you, and the Father for the blessings in the past, present, and the future, and the Father. And the Father we thank you for the disappointments having the Father, because he has made us stronger. And the Father, I bow before you to not have the Father, as that you bless this meeting especially, and the Father. Take, oh, take, 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 please protect all the officials, and the Father, and the Father, that the words of their mouth, and the meditation of their heart be accepted in thy sight. And the Father, we ask you, and the Father, that they do things that's decent and in order. And the Father, if there's anything to disagree about, and the Father, have this weekend on one accord, and the Father. And the Father asks that the audience be mindful of their position, and the Father. Father, we thank you now. Name the Father, the Son, the best Holy Ghost. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of leadership flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll.
Alderman Blackiston.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Odom. Here. In your place of presence, at this time, we're going to do the consent agenda, items three through five.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Mitchell, is there further discussion? See you none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. The next item would be item six, presentation on the upcoming National Night Out, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, tonight, as we do each year around this time, we'll have chief summers come up. We have a very exciting event that happens yearly here in New Bern. National Night Out, where an opportunity for the police and the citizens of our community and these neighborhoods can get together, socialize, and share a common theme, which is making sure that our neighborhoods and our city are safe, and also establishing that relationship between our police department that's a positive one, and that we look to work with them so that we can have success in creating a safe environment for our city. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. We certainly are excited about this year. We have so many communities this year that we're going to start on Monday, and I'm going to have Lieutenant Apok come and give you details on it. But I do want to talk a little bit about Monday. We will be starting off on Monday with Coffee with a Cop at the former Sweet Pea Restaurant, and that's from seven to ten, and from there, we'll be visiting a couple assisted living spots in the city. And then at three o'clock, here in this very room, we will be honoring or welcoming thirteen new employees to the police department, eight of which are police officers, three communications techs, and a forensic person. So we're really, really excited about that. Also during that event, we will be recognizing some pretty heroic actions on behalf of our officers, and we're really excited about that. So again, we hope that you will be able to join us. We have a schedule for you that will be passed out shortly. And Lieutenant Apok.
Thank you, Chief. Just a moment ago, I handed you a list or an itinerary of all the neighborhoods that we'll be attending throughout the city. Currently, we have twenty communities that we'll be visiting, starting at 3:00 PM in the afternoon and ending around eight o'clock. As the chief said, Monday, we will be visiting two assisted living facilities, one at McCarthy and the other on the Hamhurst. If you notice on the schedule, you'll see that there, occasionally, you'll see that the name of different communities are listed multiple times. That's to show you that we will have different caravans that will be visiting that community more than once. So they may be fifteen, twenty minutes, and then later on, someone else will come by there in the middle of fifteen or twenty minutes or so. You guys have any questions?
Yes, Lieutenant Apok. The Duffy Field, you don't have a specific address that I see in here, unless I've missed something.
Stanley White.
Yes, sir. Both of them will be at Stanley White.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can we start with a specific address, such as the locations, and welcome that to further and make sure that you hear?
Stanley White will be Duffy Field Home Base, mostly any occasion.
I'm sorry, sir.
Stanley White will be Duffy Field Home Base.
Yes, sir.
Any occasion, so you don't have to think twice about that.
Mr. Stevens, Chapman Street will be finished by then. Well.
Chief.
Mayor, the contractor is still working to get the subsurface infrastructure completed with the storm sewer, the San Andreas sewer, and water lines in Chapman. I was down there late this afternoon, cleared one major milestone, which was getting the twelve-inch AC water main out of the way, so they can continue the sewer work, but we're still looking probably within thirty days of march down Chapman Street. So unfortunately, it's still going to be a somewhat of a construction, so we need a national out. We have already talked with the contractor about that. We'll make preparations to try to got the equipment out of the way so they can get to Stanley White Center with as little hassle as possible.
Yes, sir.
Chief, got a question to ask you. Thank you, Mayor. I was reading an email the other day, and it mentioned about the license plate detector. Tell us a little bit about that. I like that program.
Okay. Basically, if the board will remember, I think it's about two years ago, we brought that idea before the board, I think it was about two years ago, and unanimously approved us purchasing a license plate recognition device, which is basically a device that scans, it can scan up to, I think, a hundred license plates a minute, as an officer would travel through a neighborhood or down the road, and it's matching the tags against a known database. Maybe it's vehicles that are stolen, or vehicles that are maybe wanted for a particular crime, and when it hits one of those tags, it will alert the officer, and the officer will know to pull it over and stop. Also, another beauty of that equipment is, if we have a major crime, and we send that car into the area, it will scan all the cars in that area, and then when we get into our investigative mode, and we focusing on a suspect, and a suspect vehicle maybe, and the suspect say, well, I wasn't there, and we have proof, because we've had this device that scanned the tag at a certain date, certain time, it helps us in our investigative efforts. Also, if a person may have some type of driving restriction, we also can put that in it. We originally bought it when you approved it about a year or two ago. However, that device didn't work as proper as we thought it should, so we had to send it back, and the one that we have now is working excellent, and we're doing a good job, and it's doing wonders for the officers out there.
Good job. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to say one more thing on that, and I think Lieutenant's got a little more to say. We're going to go the routes before, so we'll check the roads and make sure that we're going on roads that are safe for the officers and anybody who wish to follow us. And we also will check ahead of time the communities that we're going to, to make sure we can safely park, so that everybody is safe as we proceed on the caravan.
I just wanted to echo just a second of what City Manager Stevens has said, that National Night Out is really a program that's been set up and has been going on for quite some time, that allows not only neighbors to meet neighbors, but also neighbors to meet police officers and become more familiar with them. It's kind of like what when we do a Coffee with a Cop, where you get to ask and talk about families, and you get the meeting note that I've got a son in college, or they've got family around here, or they're originally from here, things like that. So it becomes more of a situation where you become more of a friend than a police officer, and you become more of an ally in the community than just a police officer. Really, this is just a great program to segue into other programs that allow us to become more community-based and involved more in the community.
Board, have any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This time, we're going to get to item number seven, consider adopting a resolution soliciting offers for 408 and 409, 408 and 409 New Street. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you recall, at the June 13th, 2017 board meeting, the board voted to offer the property that's located at 408 Hancock Street and 409 New Street as a bundle, and established a minimum bid of $559,000. In an effort to market the property, the board also voted at that time to wait ninety days before opening any bids. The proposed resolution that we have before you tonight just simply reduces this decision to writing, so that it's formal, and specifies the ninety-day period, which will have a termination date of September the 13th, 2017. Obviously, we're doing this just to make sure that it's a formal process. We also are doing it in the form of transparency, so that folks will know of this sale and have an opportunity to make an offer on it if they wish to, versus listening into an entire meeting and have it in a verbal type of situation. So we wanted to deduce this down to, obviously, something that's in writing. If you have any questions, the board is happy to answer them.
If you have questions, that was 408 Hancock Street and 409 New Street.
No questions. Mayor, on members of the board, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution soliciting offers for 408 Hancock Street and 409 New Street.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there further discussion? CNN, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, consider adopting a resolution approving an electric service agreement. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. In an attempt to attract and promote growth of new and existing customers, the city has developed an economic development rate for electric service within our rate classes. These rates are temporary in nature and reduce the operating expense of new or expanded facility for a specified period of time, oftentimes associated with jobs or growth of business. Under the economic development rate, the city delays the recuperation of its infrastructure costs to serve the customer, and it covers the cost of power supply and maintenance only. Over the past several years, Hatteras has expanded its operations to add the Cabo Yachts line, and discussing with current leadership at Hatteras, additional expansions in their product line, as well as some of their staffing are being proposed over the next several years. That will increase the electrical load and add additional employees, making Hatteras eligible for rate number five under our economic development rate. The rate will be provided for a five-year period per the agreement. Happy to answer any questions. Carl Tolder's here as well from Public Utilities, and we're happy to answer any questions we have. And I think Mr. Watson, Wade Watson, he's here also from Hatteras Yachts.
Does the board have questions?
Yes, sir.
I have questions. Three, four years ago, John and I went to Hatteras, and I think they were having layoffs, and they were going to have some people to come in, but they weren't going to have those people come in, because I think at that point in time, they were complaining, who's the gentleman for Hatteras? Got a person in for matter. Will you come up in front, sir? I don't know whether you remember it, or you know, but three or four years ago, we went out there and we cut a, I wouldn't say a deal, but we cut a rate deal with them.
Yeah, and actually, it's been over five years now. It was right whenever, to be honest with you, I think it's right when, soon as I got here almost, that we were doing the economic development incentives, because they had a five-year program at that time, and that has since lapsed, and that was associated with the expansion of their Cabo Yachts line at that time. So is that, would that be correct?
Five years ago, there was another yacht manufacturer, Cabo, in California that was in source. Those jobs were brought into New Bern, and we still benefit from that insourcing today.
Okay, you just had, if I'm not mistaken, y'all just had a layoff?
Yep, on Friday. It was less than five percent, it was twenty-three people that we were, unfortunately, we had to let go. It's, our business is cyclic in nature. Those employees all had less than a year of seniority, so they were, we hired just over fifty in January. You know, we don't announce the hiring so much as the layoffs get announced, but the growth plan that we had met with the council here and talked about was investing in new models that are to expand the offering of Hatteras and expand our market offering. We're looking for revenue growth and employment growth, and this program would help us to achieve that.
Was there a new part that you're going to add on? I guess we're going to put a meters and everything for that part, for that section?
It's within the existing footprint, so we're not planning on adding buildings, but it's increased capacity, increased employment, and new models that we're planning on investing in.
In this paperwork I have here, it says, I think it said two hundred.
Two hundred kilowatts.
Kilowatts.
Yep.
And then it says our same changes, you see, the sale and delivery of utilities is pursued by the term and conditions of the agreement. At the same time, they're talking about the agreement, there was one part in there that I read is, deal with us being responsible for something if it happened to a person?
I don't see that as any part of the agreement. It was, it's basically our commitment to grow the business, and we're going to invest capital, and in return, it's basically an economic development rate that reduces our, the rate that we pay for electricity. So on our side, we, instead of using those funds to pay for electricity, we're using it to invest in product development, new models, and business growth.
And you're going to recruit a hundred new people?
I would say at least, in that period.
And it's for five years?
Yes.
Anything else, Alderman White? Yes, I'd like to ask, just direct this question to Scott, Attorney Scott.
Yes, sir.
On page five of eight, I think it's eight point one, point two. Installation, repair, inspection, replacement.
Yes, sir, this is just, this is just the property allowing the city access to its equipment. It's an easement, more of a license, so that if the city folks need to get in there to assess any of the equipment, they would have a right to go in there during normal business hours.
The city, the city have a right, why not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, Alderman Odom.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I was brought into this discussion with Mr. Watson and some of his staff, by way of their relationship with C-1A. Hatteras has been a great supporter of that organization since its inception. Mr. Stevens was also a part of that discussion. This is sort of a renewal for Hatteras and New Bern. They've made the investment both financially, as well as with their infrastructure, to expand their operation. And as Mr. Watson said, they have some plans that's going to greatly expand their product offering. And I just wanted to point out that there's criteria that they are required to meet by way of this resolution ordinance, and if they don't meet that, which I know they will, but I know there may be some out there that we want to know what that, what that would be if they did not. So Carl, could you just maybe inform us of what would happen if they did not meet the criteria that's set for?
Yes, so yearly, we review their electric rates and their usage, and what they would need to do is show that increase gradually over the five years, and also, we would track that. At the end of the five years, we would, if they did not meet the criteria, we would backbill them at their, the correct rate that they should be.
Thank you. So it's essentially, it's a net, net, it's a net gain for both Hatteras as an opportunity to grow, and a net gain for the city with the increased usage of the electric. Thank you, Carl.
If you have any other questions.
Mayor, if there are any more questions, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving an electric service agreement for economic development rate with Hatteras Yachts.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the Harold Bait Foundation. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has been notified by the Harold H. Bait Foundation that it has been awarded a $25,000 grant for the City Market Workforce Training Development Center. The grant requires matching funds and must be accepted within thirty days of notification. This resolution before you do not authorize the city manager to accept this grant on behalf of the city. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Miss Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the grant fund from the Harold Bait Foundation for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project.
Second. Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number ten, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This item relates in part to what you just approved. This is a budget amendment that recognizes the $25,000 grant from Harold H. Bait Foundation, as well as a $50,000 contribution commitment from Craven 100 Alliance for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center project. So this is accounting for the money that we will receive in grants, in the way of grants for these projects.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution, adopt a budget ordinance amendment to City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there further discussion?
Mayor, just a comment. I debated on whether or not to say anything or not, but I decided that I am. I did want to just say that I am disappointed that the C-1A Economic Development Board decided not to contribute any more than the original $50,000 to the workforce development project. This was a request that we had directed and asked City Manager Stevens to make a $100,000 request. C-1A has done a tremendous job in raising quite a bit of funds over the past couple of years, and one of the items that always comes up in every single meeting that I've ever been to of C-1A is that we have an issue with a available workforce that's trained and ready in New Bern, and I am disappointed that they chose to only contribute $50,000. Where that goes from here, I don't know, but being that I'm, I sit on that board as representative for the city as an elected official, I will keep you all posted and abreast how that progresses.
Okay, thank, any other comments on that?
I'd like to echo what Alderman Odom has said on that one. The purpose of those funds is to support economic development. Workforce development is a critical issue, and holding job fairs is not sufficient to attract the type of workforce that we need. We need to train the workforce that will attract the industries that will come here and build our business base.
Okay, if there are no more comments, we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eleven, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Article One of Chapter fourteen to allow the sale of alcohol on Sundays beginning at 10:00 AM. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Governor Roy Cooper recently signed legislation that gives municipalities and counties the option to permit the sale of alcohol on Sundays beginning at 10:00 AM. Previous legislation prohibited the sale prior to 12:00 noon on Sunday. As you recall, the board considered this issue at your last meeting on July the 11th, a motion to amend the city's ordinance to permit the earlier sales was made by Alderman Odom. It died for lack of a second. It was requested that this come back on the agenda tonight, now that some of you have received some input from your constituents, and we are therefore bringing it before you as requested.
Board have questions, comments?
I have a comment. Mayor Outlaw, I was not here at the last meeting. I have received significant input from my constituents who support this, and therefore, I would like to put the motion back on the table, that we amend the, that we adopt an ordinance to amend Article One of Chapter fourteen to allow the sale of alcohol on Sundays beginning at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Blackiston. Is there further discussion on the item?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
I understand how this can go. I understand people have, a lot of people called them. I had somebody call me. I know my standards, I know how I feel. I had people who called me, were alcoholics, and they said, and I said, the same thing along with them. It doesn't make any difference. They're going to continue, some of them are drinking seven days a week, and yet, they are talking about, some of them are drinking seven days a week, and now, we're talking about coming from 12 to 10, and I wouldn't care about what Governor Cooper said, or how he did, or he said, do eight o'clock. It doesn't mean that we got to do eight o'clock, and those that love to drink, continue to drink. Nobody's stopping you from drinking. You're going to drink anyhow. I said, I disagreed the last time, and the people that called me, which were small alcoholics, and they agree with me, and they said, White, he said, we still, you know, we still be, still going to be drinking because of circumstances. He said, two hours, he said, 12 o'clock is good enough, two hours ain't make no difference. We, people that drink can still wait that long. I had some business people, and the business people tell me it was hurting their business. So it's hurting your business. We got some people scared to say anything, because they may lose a vote or whatever. So I lose a vote. No, I'm not here to be babying. I'm not here to let people just push me around. I'm not here to let people call and tell me that their business is losing money. If your business, if you sell alcohol and your business is losing money, because you're not selling enough alcohol, then I say, thank the Lord. Somebody's doing right. Somebody's falling back on things. So, hey, I haven't changed my opinion. I knew where this was going, and if we were, if we had here in a bottle, it probably wouldn't stay, it probably wouldn't stay here long before it'd be gone. So, hey, that's how I feel about it. And if I had my way, Bill Blue Law, wouldn't sell nothing, none of that on a Sunday.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Well, I haven't received a call about it. So again, apparently, they think that they don't need to call me. So if you don't need to call me, that means you don't value my input. Eight years ago, I said I wasn't going to allow this position to compromise my spiritual walk. I've been all over the world, all over the world, and it's been 12 o'clock, there have been no drinking at all, and when I got back to New Bern, it was 12 o'clock. Now, they want 10 o'clock. Those that know me, I'm going to stand for what I believe in, if I have to stand alone, and it don't bother me, because I'm 6'2", 240. So I don't mind standing alone, and that's what I've been doing, and that's how I felt for eight years. I was at Fort Bragg, and they were allowed to drink. And they were allowed to drink at the officer's club, 9 o'clock and on. One of the situation was, individual got to drinking and then they gotta drive home. They gotta drive home. They can't drink and stay at the club. They gotta drive home. Individual hit another car on base, 'cause they had the mimosa. Had to drink on post. They allowed them to drink on post at the club, but they had to drive off post or drive home after just drinking. MPs came to sing, pay somebody a DWI or DUI, whichever it was, I don't know. But the individual was under the influence of alcohol, just left the club. And the individual they hit was on their way to church. Innocent going to church. So, my answer the last time was no. And my answer tonight will be the same. So thank you for that. Those of you all that called, which was nobody, uh, again, thank you for the time.
Yes, sir. Any other comments? Seeing other comments and a motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Blackiston. We'll go through the roll calls, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
A great no.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. It's time we go to item number 12. Appointment, starting with Alderman Odom.
Uh, yes, sir, I have two. Um, one, I just wanted to say that, uh, Mr. Steve Jones, I appointed him and the, the board supported that decision, uh, a few weeks ago to planning and zoning. Uh, Mr. Jones had, uh, some medical issues. Wish him the best. Uh, therefore he has resigned from that position and I would like to nominate, uh, Pat Dougherty, uh, to the planning and zoning. Pat's a, uh, local realtor here and, um, resides in the Greenbrier neighborhood.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do you have any other appointments tonight?
Uh, yes, sir, one more, um, for the Police Civil Service Board. I believe we have one opening remaining. I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Chip Hughes. Chip has spent, uh, a great deal of time in his career in the law enforcement arena and I think he'd be a great fit for the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do you have any other appointments?
That's all, sir, thank you.
Uh, Alderman White, you have appointments?
I have none.
Uh, Alderman Kinsey?
How did this time, sir?
I'd like to make an appointment of, uh, reappointment of, uh, Alfred Barfield to the planning, was? Board of Adjustments. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do you have any tonight?
Yeah.
Alderman Taylor, Alderman Blackiston.
Not sure.
Okay. This time, let's go to the attorney's report.
Nothing important, I, Mayor.
Uh, city manager's report.
Nothing tonight, sir.
New business, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Uh, yes, sir, just two, two items. Um, I've gotten feedback from some downtown businesses regarding the, um, random opening and closing of the, the bridge. Um, that affects both traffic as well as businesses, business access, uh, particularly on Saturdays, Friday afternoon, Friday evening, but typically in the, in daytime. Um, so I've asked the city manager and staff to look into, uh, the possibility of a structured, uh, opening, uh, and closing schedule that would be conducive to both recreational voters, um, that may or may not, uh, conflict with the commercial operations. But we're gonna take a look at that and see what we can do to try to make things work a little bit better in terms of that congestion down there on South Front and East Front Street regarding the, uh, the bridge traffic in particular. But it also causes congestion access to hotel, uh, and various, uh, businesses down in that, in that corner of, of the city. Uh, the second item is, for many years, the Municipal Service District has been a very strong, um, instrument for the revitalization of the downtown, New Bern's downtown in particular. Uh, the business, business district. And recently, we, uh, approved a lease with the Farmers Market Board to, uh, have rents paid starting on July. And I would like to propose and make a motion that we take those rents and, uh, basically place those into the Municipal Service District Municipal MSD Fund for the further continued support of street enhancements that benefit the farmers market as well as all the downtown businesses. It's not a whole lot of money, but I think it's, uh, it's a good step forward in our partnership with all of the businesses downtown and the city farmers market. That's the motion, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Who else?
Is it, yes, sir, go right here.
What is the motion? Is the motion that they came about two months ago and agreed to pay us $500 a month?
Correct.
Now are you saying the money that they volunteered to pay, we need to put that money, give that money basically back to them and put it in the MSD? Is that what you?
I'm saying to, to put it into the MSD fund, uh, account, so those monies can be used to support further street enhancements, sidewalks, lighting, that sort of stuff.
Do they take, and what do MSD, what is the purpose of MSD? I know, just wanted to.
As I said earlier, the purpose of MSD is to enhance the redevelopment downtown through, um, street sidewalk lighting projects that have improved our entire downtown business district. And for those that don't know, MSD, uh, basically has 13, I think it's 13 3/4% tax that is paid by property owners downtown, so.
Impose tax on their sales because of?
To, to fund the public enhancements downtown in the business district. That's correct.
So they already impose a tax on themselves to take care and it's been going on for years. Now the money that they volunteered to pay is going right back to them. I mean, I'm okay, but it's like I knew something was coming, but it didn't make sense two months ago when they came before us to promise to pay 500. And now it's turning around, going right back to their pockets.
It's not going back to the Farmers Market Board?
Not directly, but indirectly.
Uh, it's going to support projects for the entire downtown Municipal Service District.
Is that not that tax imposed doing the same thing?
Well, this is not in the form of a, a tax per se, but is in the form of a lease agreement with the Farmers Market Board.
Is the not the tax, imposed tax doing the same thing? Yes, and Mr. JR?
Uh, yes, sir, the MSD tax does, uh, go towards the infrastructure, uh, same way as Mr. Blackiston's motion would, with the Farmers Market rent. They would go to support the same programs and activities within that, within that, uh, fund.
Did they, thank you, but did they do without, when they were paying their taxes? And did they, I've got, as, as long as they've been paying their tax, imposing tax on them, we appreciate it. But have they been doing, have they been doing without anything to cause the money that they just promised us to go back to their?
Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to interject a little bit. I think, um, what I need to clarify, the, the Farmers Market, the agreement that we had was with the Farmers Market to pay $500 in rent. Farmers Market is a, a, a tax-free operator. Tenant of one of our properties that they were getting for a dollar a year. So that went from a dollar up to $500.
Yep.
So they do not pay tax?
I, I, I didn't say they paid taxes.
Right.
What I said was, the MSD, the citizen, the business owners impose a tax on themselves, 13 point whatever, for the infrastructure in the, up there downtown area. Farmers Market came to us a couple of months ago and said, instead of us wanting to have a one, uh, one-dollar lease a year, we gonna volunteer to pay 500 a month. And to me, the probability don't pass a make sense test, but I left it alone. Now, Alderman Blackiston was coming saying, we wanna not accept that money, we wanna put that money back in the MSD or put it in, in the MSD for the infrastructure of the downtown, which they already got, impose a tax on it. So it's like, basically, we're not, we're giving their money back. We don't want your money.
I kinda, I kinda looked at what, what was going on. It's kinda like a pilot, a payment of little taxes. That's the way I look at it. It's, is that part of the issue was, is the maximal use of the property could be possibly other things and, and the city is not getting any revenue source. And $500 per month, $6,000 a year kinda offsets the city not getting any revenue, tax revenues in. So, um, there's several, you know, side issues there and to me, the, the idea of, uh, the Farmers Market maybe paying back to a holistic downtown fund for the betterment of the whole downtown seems very equitable, equitable to me. And I guess you could probably say pro rata, they're, they're probably getting, for the whole downtown area, they might be getting 3% of that money back for that area's health. That would be too hard to determine, but I just, again, kinda looked like it, that they were putting some skin in the game through the MSD, putting it back into the MSD.
I, I myself, Mayor, feel a little bit like Alderman Taylor. Everybody that goes to the farmer market doesn't live down here. I feel the money should go back into the avenue where it can feed out or serve the rest of peo, and serve the rest of people in the community. I don't feel that's good that you do it, that it's been done that way. And if it's gonna be done that way, then maybe the Farmers Market should just have people down here go to the farmer market.
Sir, are you saying it should go, stay in the general fund? Cause that's kinda where it is.
It should stay in the general fund. Come down in another kind of way. It should stay there.
Okay, sir, other comments and, yes, Mayor?
And now, Alderman.
Ma, Mayor, I don't, I don't wanna muddy the water, but I just, just wanna clarify with Alderman Taylor, 'cause Alderman Blackiston and myself were, were in those meetings with the Farmers Market Board. They didn't volunteer to pay $500 a month. That was a negotiation that we had with them. And the, the way that came about is through the UNC School of Government Study. I think we all know with, uh, the, the feedback and the, the surveys and the signatures that we all received, petitions, I should say. Um, the UNC School of Government recognized that as the most prime piece of rental or, uh, property available in downtown New Bern for redevelopment. So therefore, we had that discussion with Farmers Market Board. They were looking for some sort of security in their presence for the next several years. So this was a rate that we negotiated with them and they were, um, okay with that rate. It wasn't something that they volun, I just wanted to clarify, they didn't volunteer.
I, I, thank you, Alderman Odom. I've, I knew, I, I misquoted it. I knew it wasn't volunteer. I knew there was a discussion. And Alderman White said it and I left it out. Downtown people is not the only people that goes to the farmer market. And if the city has $6,000 that we are getting to utilize a piece of property and to give that $6,000 to a specific area and not the entire city, uh, again, that doesn't pass a make sense test. Because downtown is not the only part of the city of New Bern. If you're gonna get $6,000 to downtown, what about the uptown? They're not getting any of it. Every now and then I go down and spend money. I ain't getting any of it. My area's not getting any of it. So, good point, Alderman White. That's not too soon.
Other comments on that? Yeah, we have motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, Matt Clurk, did you?
White, you play one.
Yes. Any other new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, I have quite a few of them since we were early. Alderman Odom. Uh, uh, city manager?
Yes, sir.
Got a question. Got, uh, a couple of residents called me today. What's the status on the Phoenix House property? While the biblical house of God has been trying to purchase this property for their church and they've been trying for quite a few years, since it's been torn down. Why is it that we cannot, they cannot acquire that property? Or are we having plans for that property? They, they called me and, and I agree with them. If they wanna purchase it and beautify the area and build up their church or whatever, why are we still holding on to that property?
I can tell you that for me, um, and the last time that it came before us, how, Brenda, how long do you know? I mean, that, that's the last time I've seen it. I haven't seen anything recently.
That was the last time, just that once.
Several years ago, or a year or whatever. I, I haven't seen anything since then. Um, at that time, um, if I'm recalling correctly, um, there was some consideration about what to do with that particular property. As a matter of fact, at that time, might've even had the structure still on. But, uh, obviously, there were some issues that we were looking at specifically with the Guyan Street Railroad Crossing and a way in which we could potentially look at, uh, some reconfiguration and working with some adjacent landlords. But, uh, that really hasn't gone anywhere. Um, I can't, I'm, that's pretty much where I'm at right now.
I have, have to, Paul, let Brian reach out to you in the next couple of days.
It, it, yeah, if they, if, if our general process, if they'll submit a formal letter, uh, of offer, obviously then, at that point, we have to go through a process. Uh, Brenda, uh, needs to be contacted and they have to do the same process, upset bid process or whatever.
Okay, alright. Stay right at your mic. Right back to you again.
And then the, the other thing is, is, you know, we've got to check, see if it's on the surplus list. If it's not, then probably be a good idea. I think it was, uh, several, uh, of the Aldermen who wanted to kinda look at these surplus properties and determine whether or not we wanna put them on the list. If they, if we are looking to sell those properties and they have no further value to the city, then at that point, uh, they would go on the surplus list and then we would entertain an offer. But as of right now, I'd need to check to see if it's on the surplus list.
Okay.
I don't think, if not, so, and that's the reason why right now, until that changes, we as staff kind of operate from what is surplus and what is not.
I think that's what happened there. It wasn't on the surplus list at that time when that taking place.
Right.
Because you and I, we had that discussion.
Right.
And, uh, it was taken off, so I, I don't know.
And I think a lot of it, like I said, revolved around some of the things that were going on with that Guyan Street Railroad Crossing and so forth and so on. And that's the reason why it was kinda being held. And you've got the community gardens that's right there adjacent to it, plus you've got, uh, some facilities that the city utilized at that particular location to aid in, uh, the, the cemetery operations.
Yeah, I, let me make a comment about that, Alderman Taylor. Um, when that, uh, initial, uh, earlier, uh, proposal was, was presented to us, I, I think the building may have been in demolition process or may have been gone, may have been removed. And I'm, I can't recall exactly, but I discussed it with, with the church, but it's a very large parcel. But let me just say in, and this is not because of yesterday's event, but my concern has been regarding any type of church, school activity that would be, uh, bordering the railroad tracks. Gives me great concern, okay? Where children are involved or youth activities, um, those are concerns that I have. I can't change some of those facilities that already exist as the railroad tracks proceed through the city. But, uh, my concern is that, uh, we would not want to have, um, those type of activities right up against the railroad tracks and, and someone would become, get, become injured by, by railroad activities that are very, can be very severe. However, I believe that we were also at the time having conversations about the possibility of subdividing that and a portion of that property on the church side could be, um, uh, available for, for purchase. It just, just simply didn't have any follow-up. In addition, Pasture Street was being, as the city manager mentioned, was being looked at for a, an extension up to the Guyan Street Crossing because of the future, uh, development and traffic requirements coming off of the rubber station property. So, but my biggest concern, as I echo many times, is public safety and security. And yesterday's event involving a child over by the rail assembly yard, um, gives me continued concern for that. So, um, I would oppose having a childcare, uh, church, school activity right immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks. So, that's my position on it.
Well, thank you, thank you. Um, I have a reach out to you. As, uh, stay right here in this, um, ballpark, 2406 Chestnut Avenue, um, in the Primbrook area. Uh, individual at 2408 is trying to purchase the property. individual at twenty-four oh eight is trying to purchase the property right next to it, which is twenty-four oh six, and they've been trying to purchase it, as they told me today, about two years. And it's a city-owned property, I don't know if it's city-owned slash county-owned, but it's an empty lot. And she's been trying to purchase this lot for about two years. And she's been very unsuccessful in purchasing this lot. We see her properties all the time, and this lady is trying to pay fair market value of the property, and she's not allowed to do so. Can someone find out what the purpose of that, this is, do we have any plans for this? This is a...
Once again, I, you know, I'd need to know who she's spoken to and whether it's on the surplus list. But if it's not on the surplus list, then it, I mean, it was our, it was the board's direction to staff, if it's not on the surplus list, we're not selling it at this time. But if it's on the surplus list, it's available for sale. So I could check to see if that one's on there. If it is on there, I would be curious as to who they spoke with and why it hasn't proceeded further.
It'd be not about a couple, we made that commitment for not to sell properties unless they're on the surplus list within this last year or so, right? This is, she's been trying to purchase it for over two years.
And like I said, I...
I know you probably don't know.
Forgive me, because, I mean, I don't know that lot from the next lot.
I know.
There may be a potential use that some department identified, it may be that's tied up in some kind of FEMA program that where we can't even sell the property. So I really need to do the research to find out what is.
That's where I am, twenty-four oh six Chestnut.
Got it.
All right, thank you. That's all I got on those two. We were, I'm trying to figure out which one I'm going to do first. We were on tour last week, on a bus tour. And we was touring the entire city and checking on the ditches and the water and the community and da-da-da-da. And just in, we were at the corner of Biddle and Road Street. And I brought something up, and Commissioner Sampson seconded, that there is a pond on that corner that quite a few residents had requested a fence. I brought it up, city manager said what legal rights we have, and Matt Montane said the same thing. And then I mentioned that I grew up in a neighborhood, and some of the kids walked from their house to grandma's house and crossed the road to National Avenue area. So I said that it's a safety hazard for that ditch not to have a fence surrounding it. And a legal standpoint, we said that we couldn't have it based on some legal terms. And just yesterday, a young kid playing in the neighborhood got seriously injured. I've always worked, and I always say it's safety first. We need to do something about safety in the community. And I don't know if the kid fought, I don't know, laws and subs, something, whatever, whoever fought it was, but safety needs to be addressed proactively instead of reactively. Because my brother got hurt on that railroad track forty-five years ago. That could have been the easiest, that eight-year-old kid could have easily fell in that pond. I don't know where they were going or where they were coming from. But we need to start doing safety measures for all communities. Just so happened, I got the email and I got the call yesterday, that it happened on that same corner area that I was just talking about. So we need to start doing more safety precautions in the entire city of New Bern. And that's all I have on that. The other thing, enlightening news, NC Medical System, Old North State Medical Foundation, myself and Dr. Bonwell, we're doing an over-the-counter medication giveaway. Over-the-counter meaning Tylenol, Benadryl, cold medicine, children's medicine, allergy medicine, vitamins, any medicine that you can actually put your hands on in Walgreens and Walmart or CVS. We're doing an over-the-counter medication giveaway, it's free, totally free, only prescription, you must be over the age of eighteen. It is not entampered with, it's not expired, it's not generic, it's either Walgreens, Walmart, or CVS medication. You can be a millionaire, you can be on the street, just come by, I'm trying to do three thousand people. I'm reaching out to Jones, Craven, and Pamlico County residents. If you do not live in O'Dare, you still can come by, I'm trying to do three thousand people. Tell some people, you know, some people have this, make a decision whether to pay their bills or get medication for their kids or themselves, we want to make sure that they don't have to make that decision, they can come out and get it. It is totally free, when you say free, it's free. If you have a prescription that comes from a doctor, you bring your prescription, sit down and talk with a counselor. We will ensure that you, if you pass all requirement, we will ensure that the medication be mailed to you within seventy-two hours. So you can either have prescription medicine, you will not get it that day, you will get it through the mail or something of that fashion, but over-the-counter medication, totally free. Three thousand people at Stanley White, it's on August the twelfth, starting at nine AM to two PM. If you would have come out, please come out early, because we are participating over three thousand people. So again, that's all I have, again, thank you very much, if you have any questions, do not hesitate to give me a call, two five two six one seven two five three seven. August the twelfth, nine AM, Stanley White Recreations Center, nine oh one Chapel Street. Yes, sir.
Just, I just want to, Alderman Taylor, I appreciate your initiative in that area, but I just want to remind everybody that there were members of this board that also provided supplemental discretionary funding to support this particular event.
Yes, and as you see, you can't see it, but the city of New Bern is recognized as a sponsor. So again, thank you all for what you all have done, all, everyone that's done. We will have sponsorship banners out there at that event, everybody on this board is invited to come through. You come through from the city manager, city attorney, all around to us, you come through, you say you're VIP dignitary, we've got a parking space for you, but please come out, please tell your neighbors, if you do not need the medicine, your kids might need the medicine, your neighbor might need the medicine. So please, we've done it in Jacksonville last year, we had two thousand people, seven, eight hundred of them was Marines. So if you get in line, you will get some medication, each person will get about ten items of medication, you pick the medicine that you want, it's total about a hundred dollars per person.
Thank you very much. Alderman Taylor, something might be of help, I don't want to be evasive or complacent about your concern about this pond. We have so many of them around here, I would suggest that maybe at our next workshop, that we get a more quality dean or specialist with Clean Water out of Washington to just come over, whoever that be expert on the design and everything, and letting them go through the pros and cons of fencing, whatever, as far as maintenance and four-to-one sloping and things like that. But I'm sure their design is as safe as they can be for what they are, but would you, would you be amiable to that to get somebody over from Clean Water? Mr. Stevens, would we do that?
We'll make a reach out, if we...
And then we could all be a little more educated and knowledgeable about what your concerns are.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Right, and I'd also like to make a comment, it might be worth reaching out to see what grant funds are available in terms of making the fences, or any fences that are needed more affordable to the community. We're required to fence swimming pools, I don't understand why we're not required to fence ponds. They're both ground, grounding risks.
Because some of them are more problematic in certain areas, and the amount of maintenance for the steel infiltration, things like that, that that's why they not requiring them. But again, that's, I'm not the expert, I think we should get an expert and, and then go through all that. And then, and then there actually might be some ponds in the area that need fencing.
I mean, thank you, Alderman Mitchell, for bringing this point up. Yes, the parents should watch the kid, but sometimes parents can't watch the kid because of they at work or whatever the case may be. So sometimes kids are out there playing and no parental provision.
Supervision.
Supervision, so because the parents, the kid, you can't blame the kids for accidents happening because of the parents not watching. Some areas the parents can watch them, some areas the parents can't watch them. So we've got to take care of our kids because the kids are our future. If we don't take care of them, eventually they're going to, I'm going to stop, I'm going to keep going, go ahead, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, mine up. Okay, I have three items, I'll start with the easy ones first. First of all, I would like to use a hundred dollars of my discretionary fund to give to Carolina colors for their national night out. Does this require board approval, council? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in, is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, number two, the Elks Building windows. We have been discussing the unsightly characteristic, character of that building in our downtown area for a number of months. My understanding was that Swiss Bear was working with the building's owner to get some sort of wrap on the windows. We don't need that to be the next day's in. However, it's been several months, I don't see any progress, so I would like to ask the city manager to reach out and find out what the progress is, if there are any holdups, and I think...
I can give you an update right now, if you want it.
All right, that sounds good.
Last, maybe last week, we, I think it was last week, I went down and actually asked about what the status was with Lynn at Swiss Bear and Danny Patton, who's also in the Downtown Business Council. And so where we are, obviously, we're doing the streetscape work as well, the project, and we've left that section that is unfinished because of the steps that go down into the basement area that are adjacent to, or in our, in our right-of-way, underneath the sidewalk of the Elks Building right there. So in doing so, we've been working through some encroachment agreement issues with the Empire Group up in Raleigh for the ones that own the Elks Building. And in doing so, we're trying to get that wrapped up, and they're kind of tying that in conjunction where they want to send a contractor down to do all of that repair at one time, because there's going to be some stuff that they're responsible for as far as the encroachment agreement, as well as the window. And whenever they do that, get that window done, then at that point, the wrap will be ready. My understanding is, is the design has pretty much been approved through Swiss Bear. I'm not sure, Jeff, has it gone to HPC yet? Administrative approval, yes, we can approve it administratively, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. And so at that point, it's just a matter of getting this encroachment agreement finalized as well as the window repaired that's got the wood on it right now, and then they can wrap the windows.
Do we have a ballpark timeframe of when this work will be completed?
I think they're looking within the next thirty days, I mean, they talked about it at the meeting last week or so.
That's kind of the impression, I can't necessarily commit to a work scope that I'm not over, which is the production of the raft and the crews that go out there and install it. But I think it's the impression they want to try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay, so sometime this summer?
Yes.
Is what it says.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that, that answered my question for me. And the third one is my bigger issue, all of us in the community are aware of a recent spate of deaths by overdose of people in our community. This is not a new issue, we, the city moved to this spring to equip all of our units with Narcan capacity to address the overdose problem, and also to start tracking it. But this is a national problem, it's creeping into our community. It's not just opioids, it's narcotics overall, and it's a public health issue, and it is a public safety issue. But more importantly, it is a personal, family, and a community tragedy. It is a big problem, there is unfortunate, and it is a complex problem, there is no one single thing that can be done to address it. However, I think in light of the increased heroin traffic, increased opioid abuse, that we need to formally task our law enforcement for the city and for the county to reach out to the state and federal agencies that have far greater capacity and assets than we can here that can augment our own capabilities. I realize that many of those programs, Chief, and you can speak to this far better than I can, are things that, in by nature of their investigation, need to stay undercover. But I would like to ask the city manager and Chief Summers to reach out to FBI, DEA, I know we have assets in Greifel, ALE, and I'm sure you're aware of more agencies, to establish a formal, formal working group in this community to address this problem. I know y'all are in close contact with it, but I think it's time that we formalize the working relationship and see what assets that they can bring that will augment what we have here to get a handle on the program as, on the problem as early as possible. I'm not asking you to comment on it, I'm asking you to start working on establishing those, I will say, formal working group within the law enforcement agencies to address the problem here in Creighton County.
Is that in form of a motion, or?
Yes, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, and the second is there a discussion?
To piggyback off of what Alderman Mitchell said, that is a very serious crisis that we have all out through the country, as well as it's actually coming toward us, and we need to move forward on that, like she said, immediately.
Any other discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, anything?
No, sir, that's all.
I don't have anything tonight.
Alderman White.
Yes, we get back to the pond, we talk about fence, we did that pond, the questions, and the people in the community were complaining because they wanted fence. I spoke on that fence several times, and the thing that came up was dealing with maintenance. Maintenance, kind of small to me, considering the possibility someone could drown in there, but that's, that was the following points that I got back, talking to maintenance of it, how they wanted to keep it neat, or you couldn't go inside, or how far the fence would be back and all this, but it's about the fence.
Were you getting the comments from staff, or from?
It came from the staff. I mean, when I have a problem dealing with anybody, I bring it back, and it's not the staff, it was, I go to the city manager. And so, and it just happened to be to talk about the fence. And so it never got off the ground, because it comes up every now and then, and we talk about it. And it's still come back about maintenance. I think it's a serious thing you need to have it done, even though kids grow up over there, and they, they play in that, play over there if they can, if they can walk through that middle aisle with the rocks on it, they would do that, I would have done it if I was a little boy. The other part is that we talk about trains, and I don't need somebody that wasn't born here to talk about these trains. As much as we talk about the trains, and I grew up around here, and on the average, my age, on the average, one every ten years, ever since I've been small, that's been a kid that's been hurt, lost a leg, a limp while we were playing ball, and somebody called a guy and say, you got hurt, go home. Your brother just got, leg just got ran over by the train. We've always had those incidents, even when I moved over that way, that was one of the, my major pet peeves that worried me to death, because I got, I had sons and daughters. And you say stay in the yard or go the other way, you don't know where these kids going. After later on, I find out, hey, they crossed where the train was. You can't, if you, if you got boys, we normally going to go. I, you can tell us a thousand times not to do something, it'll haunt us and stay in out here, at least to stay their minds. But I knew I didn't have no business doing what I did, but I did it, I jumped on the trains. We used to play on them all the time, the trains used to be parked all the way over there on Queen Street, all the way in the Gant. I lived on that side of town, so that's where we played on the trains, the Gant. Then we would catch the train, ride the train from a certain part of First Street all the way to West Street. Okay, so that, that's, those are the things that come about. The issue the last time, one of my baby boys, friend got killed there, and he was nine years old. And so now they keep the little gate locked where you can't go across. That's, that's all well and good, so we can't go across, but that don't stop kids or people from walking under or going over that way. from walking under, or going over that way. There was a, a argument a while back, talking about the fence. I mean, it never, never bothered me about the fence, but nobody wanted to, to do that, and they talk about car spraying. It doesn't make any difference. Most everybody I know that got ran over, or got hurt, or lost a limb over there, was a little kid. I don't, a little boy. I don't think they were, there were some older people somewhere down the line, you know, but I, I can go all the way back, I can go back to the fifties. It's always somebody get hurt. Nobody seemed to care, you talk, like you do, and you go around in circles, but a lot of us don't have to worry about, because we don't have kids out there. You know, we complain about the pool that we have. Well, so far, we, we, we fished out some people that would have drowned, but we haven't been pulling out a lot of people that drown every year, like we used to. So the, the pool, to me, is a blessing. I'm tired of going to the creeks, telling little kids to get out of the water. Some people don't care. You know, so, I, I just had to get that off me, and the little boy that got hurt the other day. Nobody, nobody knows, he, he falls in some bracket. He falls in a bracket. And if you were nine years old, it could have been you. He lost part of his, I didn't get messed up by a train, but I, I got my, my, my foot, leg nearly cut off. And when it, when the guys got me back home, I sit on the porch, and the first thing that I heard this lady say, that struck me, that he said, don't tell his mama. When I got my foot nearly cut off, right along the by, to Trent Court, I didn't want my mama to know. Didn't want her to know. And yet, I was getting a whooping on the way home, when I, when I got to the house on Church Street, I know it's a long stir, but when I got to the church, the house on Church Street, I told the guy, just leave me sitting on the porch. They left me sitting on the porch, my mother kept calling me, and I kept saying, I'm coming, but I never came. So she grabbed a little switch, she came. I hopped from there all the way to my house, on one leg. I was a real little boy, and she, she didn't wash me up. Actually, didn't wash me up. I didn't tell her that my leg was about cut, cut off. When she looked back there, she's, you know, washed me back there, she like, had a fit. And I still didn't tell her, somebody squealed on me. But, uh, and, these, these things are still happening. We can stop, we can stop some of them. We're grown people, we can stop them. It ain't hurt us. We can stop some of the parents from having to go through some of the suffering they go up through. Some of them are busy, especially single parent. I know, seeing, I coached for forty-five years, I know what single parent go through. You can't trust everybody with your kid, but I know what to go through. But we can help out if we want to. I, I said enough, a couple of all that, and I'm through.
Okay, Alderman Odom.
Uh, nothing, Mike, sir.
Okay, this time, we need a closed session tonight.
We do, members of the board, for two matters. One, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property by purchase, option, or lease. That's pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen eleven, A five, and then A three, to maintain our attorney-client privilege. And then, we have a personnel matter pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen eleven, A six.
Make motion that we go into closed session for Sid.
Second. Motion and a second, is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.